We'll now call to order the meeting of the Urbana City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Aaron Ammons, Bill Brown, Eric Jacobson, Dean Hazen, Jared Miller, Dennis Roberts, Mary Alice Wu, Mayor Marlin.
Here.
Okay. Next order of business is approval of the minutes from the May 1st meeting. Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
I'll second.
Okay. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Okay, they're approved. Any additions to the agenda? I do have one deletion under new business, item 3D. We're going to hold off on doing the appointment to the Public Arts Commission. Eric's term actually doesn't end until June 30th, so tonight we're going to vote on the filling the vacancies that were created by council members moving off the city council. And we'll hold the public arts appointment till later. Thanks. Okay, petitions and communications. I have three people who wish to address the Urbana City Council. First is George Armata. You'll have five minutes to speak.
I'll speak quickly. Mayor, council members, thank you for your service to this community and thank you for the opportunity to speak here today. My name is George Amaya. I am an Urbana resident and local business owner. I would like to address a comment that Mr. Ammons made at the city council meeting of March 27th where he questioned the executive director of the Urbana Business Association, Ms. Ballerata, about a new karaoke event that they were initiating called the Cinco de Mayo. Mr. Ammons inquired whether the local Latino community had been consulted about the UVA's appropriation of their cultural tradition. He suggested that the Latino community might find the term Cinco de Mayo and the cultural appropriation offensive. I want to thank Mr. Ammons for standing up for the Latino community in his attempt to shield it against what he saw as a disparaging example of cultural insensitivity. Mr. Ammons, I appreciate the role that you provide for the minority communities here at the Urbana City Council. I would however, like to share with you and with the council, a perspective about the Latino community label as it is frequently used. I am a Colombian-American and whereas that qualifies me under the US Census Bureau category of Latino, I do not claim to speak for the entire Latino community, nor do I claim to speak even for the Colombian-American community in Champaign-Urbana. I speak only for myself. This amalgamation of all Spanish-speaking Latin American countries is common in today's lexicon. Regardless, I respectfully submit to you that this is often considered a deeply offensive slight to the 19 distinct cultural heritages that make up the Latino community, of which only one, Mexico, attaches any significance to the May 5th, which by the way, as I'm sure you all know, it is not the Mexican Independence Day as it is frequently mislabeled. Having been raised in Miami, Florida, I will tell you that you should never call a Colombian a Cuban, a Cuban a Mexican, a Mexican a Guatemalan, et cetera. Likewise, after almost 30 years of living in this community, I've come to appreciate that you should also never refer to a Korean as Japanese, Japanese as Chinese, or an Indian as Pakistani, or an Iranian as an Arab. And above all, you should never, ever, call an Australian a Brit. The labels Anglo, or Latino, or Asian, or Middle Eastern, all have appropriate usage, but we should be cognizant that their limitations, of their limitations, and the need for cultural distinctions when appropriate. Everyone deserves a right to be proud of his or her distinct cultural heritage. Please remember that most of these Latin countries are contemporaries of the American colonies. They all have long and distinct histories, and their citizens, whether American immigrants or not, have the right to be proud of the unique cultures. Though it is a natural human instinct to distinguish between us and to generalize the them, no one likes to be stereotyped. I know many immigrants that react defensively when they experience similar cultural insensitivity. In fact, just a couple of weeks ago, I met a gentleman from Iran who shared with me how upset he gets when people mistake him for being Latino. I got the distinct impression that he does not react kindly to that misidentification, but ironically, he did not accord Latinos the same respect that he felt was his own right. In my experience however, most of these cultural insensitivities are not born of racism or cultural prejudice. And even though willful ignorance is sometimes apparent, more times than not, it is just a simple lack of familiarity, which unfortunately now is complicated with this difficult and nebulous metric we call political correctness. I for one, prefer to address these moments as opportunities to be an ambassador. People who know me will tell you that I regularly handle these sometimes awkward moments with humor. When people ask me what a Colombian is doing in the Midwest, I regularly lean in, lower my voice, and say, "Federal Witness Protection Program." It is a humorous, self-deprecating comment that I find tends to diffuse a potential tense situation, but more importantly, I believe that it invites people to become familiar with a different culture. But of course, there are references common to Colombians that only Colombians are permitted to use or hurl at each other. Social decorum would deem it inappropriate for non-Colombians to make a reference to my B and C, a member of a certain cartel. I do wonder however, whether any culturally derogatory name-calling between Colombians does more harm than good. Personally, I believe that the cure to prejudice and racism is familiarity, but familiarity is usually best received as an invitation, not an imposition. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Amaya.
So I'm reminded of an incident when Naomi was in the legislature. I was often, often had occasion to mingle socially with other members of the legislature, and one was Martin Sandoval, Senator from Chicago area. And I asked Martin, did he prefer Hispanic, or Latino, or whatever, and he kind of growled at me, "Mexican-American."
I like to just consider myself an American. I think I've earned it. Any other questions?
George, what do you do here in Urbana?
I have a small marketing communications company called Ampride Communications. And the product you might know us by is, we publish the Community Concierge Magazine.
Oh, okay, cool. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Excellent publication. Say one thing first. Mary Alice?
Thank you. I just want to thank you for coming out. I think it's really important for people to understand that race and ethnicity is in some regards a social construct, and I think that in each society, we have designated different groups of people that is belonging to these different groups. So thank you very much for coming out and giving us that information for everybody who's watching. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
We have a card from Bishop King James Underwood. He doesn't wish to speak, but he is continually concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer And we have a card from Katie Adams from Crisis Nursery, and she wishes to speak about the application for consolidated social service funding.
Hi, good evening. I'm Katie Adams, and I'm representing Crisis Nursery tonight. I know you heard from some of our other social service agencies this evening, and because we weren't selected to present, I wanted to come and share a little bit about the nursery and be available for questions in case you have any. For those who may not be familiar, Crisis Nursery's mission is to prevent child abuse and neglect. We provide emergency childcare for families in crisis and supportive services to strengthen families. When families are facing situations that could put their children at risk of harm, we work with them to provide a safe alternative. Excuse me, I'm using my phone for notes, so I don't forget anything. Families use the nursery for a variety of reasons, including homelessness, extreme parental stress, and medical crises, among others. As part of the consolidated social service funding application, we are requesting $20,000 from the City of Urbana. Last year, we were funded at $11,000. Over the past few years, we've seen an increasing need in our community, to the point that last year, there were over 900 incidents where families called Crisis Nursery asking for help, but the nursery was already at capacity and we had to turn them away. This increased funding from the City of Urbana will help us meet that need. Our request is approximately 2% of our total agency budget for the next fiscal year, but our services serve, about 40% of our total services given are to Urbana residents. I want to thank you for your consideration and for your service, and I'm here to, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is the budget presentation, so I'm going to move up there. And I'll pass the chair to Mary Alice.
Do you want to recognize the mayor?
I'm sorry, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you. Good evening. We are here tonight to present the fiscal year 2017-18 budget. With me is our Finance Director, Elizabeth Hannan. Before we begin, I'd like to acknowledge the contributions of staff in the Finance Department, Sophie Pham, Don Ho, and Chris Francisco in preparing this budget, along with department heads and chiefs, and their respective staff members, and Mike Munson, Chief of Staff. The presentation today focuses on the general fund, which is the fund from which we pay most of the bills for the daily operation of the city. The complete budget is posted on the city's website. Council members received a copy of it in their packet last week, and a printed copy for viewing is available in the city clerk's office. So the budget before you tonight represents a realistic shift in our financial perspective. It's a more realistic appraisal of our financial situation. The City of Urbana is taking the difficult but necessary steps to build a foundation for the future through financial transparency, accountability, and practical steps to improve the city's financial position going forward. I also want to ensure employees and the public that we intend to face our challenges head-on so that we can continue to provide necessary services and programs for the people of Urbana and to position ourselves for growth. As you know, the state Supreme Court decision to send the hospital property tax issue back to the Circuit Court was a significant financial setback for the city. This put us in a position closest to the worst-case scenario in our financial forecast. And those of you who attended the financial forecast meeting with the Finance Director earlier this year recall being warned that this would be the scenario if this decision came down. So the city is now receiving approximately 1.2 million less on an annual basis. In addition, there are several serious concerns about long-term budget issues, including funding for police and fire pensions, which is currently more than a million dollars short of the recommended amount. We're facing a structural deficit in the general fund, which pays for most day-to-day operations at the city, including fire, police, and most public works activities. We also have to address years of inadequate investment in the city's infrastructure, our streets, sidewalks, streetlights, storm sewers, and we have to consider potential fallout from the state's ongoing budget crisis. The longer we go without a budget, the more likely it becomes that the state will turn to the cities to help solve their financial crisis. Given this background, it's probably not surprising that this budget includes a number of reductions and very few new expenditures. I want to give you a little bit financial background and our economic, financial outlook, which serves as a backdrop for our budget. And really, it's the good news. The vitality of the City of Urbana is inextricably tied to the University of Illinois. It's our largest employer, it anchors our economy, had a 2017 payroll of nearly a billion dollars, and we have 44,800 students from across the country and around the world, which enriching our community. The healthcare sector is our second-largest employment sector in Champaign County, with about 8,000 people on the payroll. Carl Foundation Hospital's main campus in Urbana alone employs about 3,500 people and brings 2,500 to 3,000 people, visitors, daily to the City of Urbana. Other factors that impact our financial outlook, the U of I's flash index shows that the state economy is growing modestly. Property assessed taxes, property assessments in Urbana increased by four and a half percent for the 2016 tax levy, which is the first real growth in assessments since 2009. This growth was driven by increases in existing property values, as well as by new construction added to the tax rolls. We had two new major student housing complexes that were completed. These include Campus Circle with 181 units, and Next to Campus Apartments with 84 units. The Champaign-Urbana metro area unemployment rate is 4.5%, which is slightly lower than the state's rate of 4.9%. And the City of Urbana has very little debt. We have 6.44 million in general obligation debt outstanding. If no new debt is issued, the city will be free of debt by the end of fiscal year 2023. And in the last year or so, we have put into place a couple of very significant economic development tools. The central tax increment financing district, our TIF district, now has five active agreements in place, leveraging $4 million in investment. Our enterprise zone currently has 13 commercial projects underway, with private investment of $7.6 million and 120 new jobs, plus 56 new single-family and duplex housing units. These development tools are critical to building out our subdivisions and stimulating infill development in the city. This brings us to the budget today. Our presentation today focuses, as I said, on the general fund, from which we pay the bills for the daily operation of the city. In recent years, the city has used short-term strategies to balance the budget. These included taking money from the Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund, our VERF Fund, to balance the general fund budget. We deferred payment of our annual MetCAD fee, or we borrowed part of our MetCAD fee, which supports the county-wide emergency 911 system, and we're now paying our fee plus paying back that which we borrowed. We reduced funding for police and fire pensions from what is recommended by our actuary to the minimum required by state law. That's not enough, and we all know what a slippery slope that is, and how quickly we can dig ourselves into a hole on that one. And costs for various services were shifted to other funds. We cannot and will not continue this practice because we're digging ourselves into a hole. We must have a balanced and fiscally sustainable budget, which will require some thoughtful and strategic decision-making over the next few years. Some cuts are included in this budget, and more will be necessary. As the first step in budget transparency, we're moving $5.26 million in disputed hospital property taxes from the general fund balance to the general reserve fund. This gives us a more, this gives a more accurate picture of the true financial condition of the city. This entire amount, the 5.26 million, potentially would have to be paid back to the hospitals. It's not ours to spend at this time, and it should not be presented as such in the buzz, in the budget. What this means is that our reserves, the reserves that we could actually draw on in the case of an emergency, are lower than the level required by our city's financial policy, which is 15% of recurring expenditures. In the proposed budget before you, our ending fund balance for fiscal year 18 is projected to be 12.5% of recurring expenditures, which is still a shortfall of $800,000. Some more adjustments will be required in fiscal year 19 to rebuild our reserves. And these reserves are important because these are the city's rainy day funds. This is what we would draw on in the case of a natural disaster like the tornado we had a few years ago, or a financial emergency created by the situation in Springfield. It's important to have adequate reserves in case of potential emergencies. The budget also includes a couple of significant initiatives, which really is an investment in our future. We'll fill the position of city administrator to bring professional management to the City of Urbana. The administrator will profess, will focus on economic development, long-term planning, and implementation of the mayor and city council goals and policies. The recurring cost for this position is about $190,000. This includes salary, benefits, memberships, professional development. We'll also begin the first phase of the programming and space needs assessment and facility planning process in order to provide a framework for decision-making in the coming years. The total cost of the facility study is estimated at $150,000 to $175,000 over the two-year period. We've budgeted $75,000 for the first phase. And I can tell you, after working here in this city building for, for two weeks now, I've come to appreciate even more how cramped for space we are in this building and elsewhere in the city, and how our employees have, make a tremendous effort to fit into every nook and cranny in this building. We also will be looking at how people and programs are working together. There are very few other new expenditures in this budget. We do propose to partially restore funding to the Champaign County Economic Development Corporation to previous levels with a contribution increase of $9,600. The fire station ventilation systems in all fire stations will be modernized and funded from the retained risk fund for a total of $93,000. We are proposing no wage increase for management and most professional employees. We've proposed very modest increases for union and lower-wage, non-union employees. Several of our much-needed capital improvement projects are, will be funded in the coming year. Construction on the EMCOR project is going to continue on Green Street in Urbana from Wright Street to Bucy Avenue. This is part of a comprehensive effort to transform the heart of campus, and it will provide a critical connectivity between campus and downtown Urbana along Green Street. Total cost for the city is 1.5 million over two years. The shared-use path will be constructed on Cunningham Avenue between Canyon Road and Napleton Way, with the city's share totaling $185,000 from the TIF 4 Fund. This will provide a much-needed safe way for pedestrians and bicyclists to travel between their homes, workplace, and commercial areas north, in North Urbana. And there are several much-needed street resurfacing projects that will be completed in fiscal year 2018 that will use either local or state motor fuel tax funds. These include Vine Street from Main Street to University Avenue, Lincoln Avenue from Green Street all the way to Saline Court, which is north of I-74, Springfield Avenue from Gregory Street to Kohler Avenue, and Race Street from Washington to California. These are streets that I've heard many complaints about, and I think will be very welcomed by the public for these, to have these resurfaced. They're high-profile, heavily-used streets in our community, and surfaces are in lousy condition, and we're grateful to be able to get this work done this year. In order to balance this budget, we're proposing increasing the local food and beverage tax to 1.5%. It's currently 1%. This will generate an additional $390,000. The tax is imposed upon food and for immediate consumption and alcoholic beverages. Other city funds will have an increase in fees. There's a 2.5% increase in the sewer use fee to generate $39,000, 2% increase in the stormwater fee to generate $30,000, 2.5 increase in the recycling tax to generate an extra $15,000. There will be no increase in parking meter rates at this time. Last week, when you got the fee schedule, a, an increase was proposed, but we've since learned that the university and the City of Champaign do not intend to raise their rates. We were going to raise ours to match theirs, so we'll be keeping ours at $1 an hour. There's a fairly long list of budget reductions in the budget message, and I'll discuss just a few of them here. The planned transfer of 2.7 million over three years that would have corrected the deficit in the Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Fund is going to be extended to 15 years, beginning in fiscal year 2017. So that will reduce spending annually from $897,000 to $180,000. The mayor's chief of staff will retire in early summer, and that position will not be filled, with about $110,000 being allocated toward the city administrator position. The Director of Community Development Services is going to retire as of June 30th, and that department will be reorganized with a net savings of approximately $140,000. General fund support for the Urbana Business Association will be reduced from $28,000 to $14,000. The UVA receives substantial support from TIF funds, plus support for specific events, and will continue to do that. The general fund support for public arts is reduced by $15,000. Public arts is largely funded from TIF funds, and the Public Arts Fund stands at $130,000, with a fund balance of $51,000 projected at the end of the year, which can be used for arts programming. We plan on maintaining the same level of spending on social services as last year, which was approximately $250,000, coming from the City of Urbana and Cunningham Township. There's a one-year reduction of $25,000 in general fund support for social services due to the fact there's a balance left in this fund of about $26,000 unspent from this year. But again, I want to emphasize that the overall level of support is the same as last year. One goal of, we have an important goal, is to reduce our dependence on outside legal services, and to bring labor negotiations into house for the next cycle. The special counsel budget in the mayor's office has been reduced in this budget by $35,000, and an additional $50,000 has been moved to the legal division for closer monitoring on the use of outside counsel. Mayor's travel budget will be reduced by $5,000. We'll be modifying yard waste, leaf pickup, and Christmas tree collection to reduce costs by $20,000. These services all will continue, but with a low, slightly lower frequency of pickup. So the complete list of budget reductions are, again, provided in the budget message, and I'll turn this over to Elizabeth Hannan to go into more detail on revenues and expenditures.
Okay, so I'm just going to give you a few charts here that will give you the big picture on the budget. So first, we're going to take a look at all funds combined, and this slide that you're looking at here shows the general fund at the bottom in blue, and at the top is all other city funds, which are in green. So you can see a couple of things here that might jump out at you. There's my pointer. So in particular here, between fiscal 16 and fiscal 17, the blue portion, the general fund portion, is becoming smaller. Some of that's because there were some one-time revenues in fiscal 16, however, much of that is due to declining receipts from sales and income tax, which is something we need to be very concerned about. Also, the reason for other funds in FY17 is that, just the timing of receipts mostly due to revenues and capital improvement funds, for example, state reimbursements for projects like Olympian Drive and Lincoln Avenue. Just timing can cause that to fluctuate quite a bit. Then looking at expenditures for all funds, as you can see in this chart, most of the fluctuation here is in this purple portion at the top, again, which is capital expenditures. That's always the largest part of the budget that tends to fluctuate, both on the revenue and expense side. Those capital expenditures have been as low as 7.4 million in FY16, and as high as 18.7 million, which is our estimate for FY17 during the time period that's shown on this graph. You also, you also might notice a large blip in expenditures for services here, the green. You also might notice a large blip in expenditures for services here, the green portion on the bar to the far left, and that is almost entirely due to a distribution of $11.6 million from TIF III to overlapping taxing districts that happened at the end of fiscal '15. In FY '18, it's worth noting that even for all funds combined, 57% of expenditures are for personnel. So looking at the general fund more specifically, this pie chart shows all of our general fund revenues, 33.4 million estimated for FY '18. As you can see, the largest piece here is sales tax. That's 28% of the total, so that's state sales tax and home rule sales tax combined. This is a concern, again, because our sales tax performance has been very weak. In fact, comparing last year to this year, we expect by the end of the year that our sales taxes will be down about 2.5% compared to same-time period last year, and for FY ' '18, we're expecting growth of about 1%. Property taxes are the next-largest piece here, about 13% of the general fund. Again, we need to be concerned because if the state chooses to put a property tax freeze on the city, which has come up repeatedly in the legislature, that piece could get smaller over time. Also, of the 4.3 million in property tax that's coming into the general fund, more than half of it goes right out, again, for police and fire pensions. It just passes right through. Income tax at 12% is the next-largest piece. Estate shared revenue. So unfortunately, this has been brought up repeatedly as a potential cut to divert some of this funding to the state to help balance their budget. I've heard proposals anywhere from 25% to 50%. A 50% reduction in income tax would lose us $2 million in revenue annually. You will notice in your budget book that there's a section, I don't recall exactly which page it begins on, called revenue analysis, and there's a lot more information in there on our major revenue sources. So looking at general fund expenditures by classification, you can see that in the general fund, the blue portion is personnel costs, and that is, for FY '18, about 73% of all of our expenditures. So the vast majority of everything we spend in the general fund is for staff. That includes salaries and benefits, such as health insurance, and also pension cost. Most other categories of expenditures here are decreasing for next year, and part of the reason for that big decrease is that here in FY '17, the transfer of 5.26 million to the general reserve fund is an expense in the general fund in FY '17. So it makes FY '17 unusually high, which then shows FY '18 is a significant decrease. It would be a decrease without that, but that's a pretty significant chunk. Expenses for services are higher in FY '17 and FY '18. You'll notice that in the green bars over here in the last two columns, and that's due in part to one-time expenses for software implementation and finance and public works. So this is perhaps the most interesting chart I'm going to show you tonight. This takes a closer look at our general fund balance, and it probably looks familiar because you've seen something like this when we looked at the financial forecast. So this chart shows the ending fund balance, starting in FY '15, FY '16, estimated for FY '17, and budget for FY '18. So as you can see, at the end of this year, we're already below the green line, which is our policy goal, to keep our fund balance at 15% of recurring expenditures. And we increased that a little bit in the next budget, but we don't quite get there, so we have more work to do. Also, the big decrease here between FY '16 and FY '17 is related partly to planned deficit spending. We had a number of one-time expenditures in this year's budget, particularly for capital improvements, the transfer of 5.26 million to the general reserve fund, and also because our revenues are falling short of expectations. All those things together combine into a very dramatic decrease in fund balance. In order to give you comparability over time, I've shown in the two bars on the left, the blue portion is actually the portion that is potentially owed to the hospitals, and so that gives you a better comparison if you just look at the bottom part of the bar over time. In FY '15, in fact, if we had not had that 5.26 million in our fund balance, our fund balance would have been precipitously low at about $1.2 million. So in this year's proposed budget, as the mayor mentioned, our fund balance is at 12.5% of recurring expenditures. That's still about $820,000 short of our 15% goal, and arguably, that goal may be too low, given all the uncertainty that we're facing. This slide looks at general fund recurring revenue and expense, and as you can see here in the current fiscal year, we're just about dead even on recurring revenue and expense. We didn't start the year that way, but our revenues came up short, and we added expenses to the budget during the year. We added three new positions during the year, as well as other expenditures. And then next year, through some very careful budgeting, we were able to increase that gap to a more comfortable position. So in next year's proposed budget, recurring expenditures in the general fund will be 97.6% of recurring revenues. Now, that sounds good. That sounds like we have a little flexibility there, but remember, because we have this structural deficit and our revenues are not growing as fast as our expenditures, that's not going to stay that way for long if we don't take some other action.
So looking ahead toward this summer and actions that we'll be taking over the coming year, we are developing a voluntary separation incentive program, known as VSIP. This is a similar program that was offered at the University of Illinois in the city of Champaign several years ago. This is a way to reduce staffing through a voluntary program, and it's much preferable to other approaches. And it should provide additional decreases in recurring expenditures, provide some funds to address our long-term financial concerns, and to help build our reserves. We are continuing to deal with a very high level of uncertainty without a state budget. And again, the longer that continues, the more likely it is that the state will be turning to the cities for revenue to help solve their problems. Any decision on the hospital property tax issue is years away. Fiscal challenges we face are daunting, but I'm committed to facing them head-on. It starts with being honest about our financial situation and straightforward about what we can do to address it. The city is taking some difficult but absolutely necessary steps to build a foundation for the future, and the goal is always to provide the services and programs that the people of Urbana need and to provide us a foundation upon which we can build for the future. So as part of this effort to explain this budget and to address as many concerns and answer as many questions as possible, this week, we've scheduled seven budget briefing meetings for employees, and that includes employees of the Urbana Free Library, May 17 through 19, morning, afternoon, and evening, so that hopefully there's a time that everyone can find to be able to attend one of these meetings. On May 22, at the council meeting or the committee of the whole meeting, Bill Gray will present the capital improvement plan, and we'll also get a briefing on the library budget. On June 5, we'll hold a public hearing on the budget, and Elizabeth will go into more detail on some of our long-term funding issues. And then on June 19, the ordinance adopting the budget will be presented, and the ordinance amendment for the fiscal year '17 budget will be presented. So thank you very much, and we'll be happy to answer questions. Bill?
Yeah, I'll start with the VSIP program. Would that also be available to library employees, are you imagining?
I think that would probably be a decision that the library board would have to make, just as initially, that will be offered to non-bargaining employees only. I don't think we could offer that to our union employees without agreement with the unions on that, so that's the initial focus. But I think the library board could choose to do that.
And then, have you been able to estimate, through department heads or anything, approximately what level of savings that could produce in its most successful implementation?
It depends on the number of applicants and the decisions made, so I don't think we have a firm estimate.
Yeah, I mean, it is tricky because it's voluntary, and it's voluntary on both sides. So we could receive applications and review those applications and determine that there is no long-term savings available, and so we may deny some applications. We don't know how many people are going to apply, but I think it's a good first step to try and voluntarily identify some savings that'll help us to get where we need to be.
And I will say, I retired from the U of I when the VSIP was offered there, and when I first heard about this program, I figured, oh, it's for people who are close to retirement, and they'll just, you know, retire a year or so early. But it turns out, it offered opportunities for people that I hadn't thought about. For example, one person in our department was in his 30s, and he decided to -- he qualified, he applied, he decided to use the incentive payment to pay tuition to go back to school. So it was -- he took that opportunity. Other people who had been thinking about changing careers saw this as an opportunity to give them a little financial cushion and some flexibility to go ahead and do that. So it offered a lot more opportunities than I really was aware of at the time, so we're going to offer that same thing here for the city.
Okay, thanks. That's all I have for now, but maybe again later.
Can you talk about the strength of the TIF districts?
I'm sorry, can you?
Can you summarize the strength right now of our current TIF districts?
Do you mean the financial?
Yes. Yes. In other words, you know, that's potentially -- that's a resource that the city has that has -- it's a reserve potential for development, and I'm just wondering how strong is -- what's the status of the central TIF that we just created? Is that basically an empty TIF at this point because of lack of development?
Yeah, I mean, we have TIF districts in all sort of stages of development.
Right.
But central TIF is very new, and so we expect that they'll receive relatively little property tax increment in the first year because they haven't had the opportunity to grow that increment. But as we use that money to invest, the theory is that that increment's going to grow and grow and grow, and we can continue to reinvest.
All right. So they're going to be building over time, and I guess I'm concerned about the potential for developmental projects in the community. Diane, you mentioned that one of your goals was to, perhaps not a goal, but that you saw that if the city didn't acquire any further debt, that it would build -- it would pay back, pay down the city's debt in, what, about 10 years? What was the date that you said?
2023.
2023. That's not too far away. All right. Your budget doesn't include, really, that I can tell, any leeway right now for taking action upon a possible development at the Urbana-Lincoln Hotel. How would you address a package deal that would come to us from a developer to cover some of the funds that might be requested for the development to proceed?
Well, currently, the proposal before us is for the city to take on new debt in the general fund, which is the fund that we've been discussing tonight. So it started at 9.5 million, and now it's 7 million. So that is the current proposal before us. That also included the possibility of a surcharge on the hotel motel tax and the food and beverage tax at the hotel. It included using whatever tax increment was generated as well. So that particular proposal does have us taking on more debt.
I would say, even if it was in -- even if we had a development agreement in hand, you wouldn't see most of that in the FY '18 budget because the thought was that if we were going to issue debt to pay that incentive, that it would be upon completion of the construction, and that would not happen in this budget year.
Right. So it's not really -- so that really wouldn't curtail any kind of progress in working with a developer to complete a proposal and perhaps adopt one if we agreed to it.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like it's customary here in Urbana that when council approves a development agreement, at that time, we amend the budget, particularly for larger projects.
Correct.
So if there's a development agreement approved and it involves expenditures in FY '18, then we'll amend the budget to do that.
Okay. And then I have one more question. Can you flesh out a little bit about the interaction between council and the new administrative director or staff person? City administrator?
City administrator.
If I could get the right name. How would council -- I guess this is really not so much a budget question, but it is going to be adopted as a new element in the structure of the city, and having not worked under one for so many years, the city council doesn't have any real understanding of how the interaction happens, so I hope that you help us. I guess I want to know what kind of a screen that is going to work as, as far as getting approvals for projects or interactions for developmental ideas in the city and the community, even if they're social or economic or whatever level, as opposed to going directly to the mayor. I mean, it looks like kind of a screen between council and mayor, and I'm kind of wondering how that will work out effectively.
Well, number one, it won't be a screen. You have my phone number.
Yeah, I know. I walk in your office, too, but...
And you know where my office is, so no, it will not be a screen. The city administrator will be responsible for the day-to-day management of the operations of the city. There's a great deal of planning and getting some -- I call it the infrastructure of the city brought back up to where it should be, and that's one of the things this person will be doing in addition to day-to-day operations. And I also expect this person to focus on economic development, so a lot of their will be focused outward in the community, and work with the city council as we develop goals and our city council goals. This is a mayor-council form of government. The city administrator answers to the mayor, and there certainly, I don't expect to see a screen or a division in communication in that way.
Great. And so the reorganization of community development, then, it suggests that the city administrator would be moving into the direction of economic development more particularly, and then leaving other parts of the community development office to other employees or other job allocations.
Yeah, we're still working on how that will be reorganized. It's all relatively new.
Yeah, very interesting.
So we went through an exercise with staffing the police department where the basis for the discussion and the decision we made was that it really, you know, we needed to beef it up, and we've committed to doing that. So in that context, will VSIP be available to police officers, or will that be an exception?
Well, we need to increase staffing in our police department to bring it up to recommended levels, and that was why we added the two positions this spring. Those are union employees, and so no, the VSIP is not available to...
Oh, right. Doesn't apply to union employees. So do you think there would ever be, I guess, hmm, I'm trying to think, do union employees ever participate in VSIP programs?
I can tell you that in Champaign, when this was offered, some... I can tell you that in Champaign, when this was offered some years ago, the AFSMI union elected to participate, but there it was never offered to police or fire either because it only saves you money if you reduce staffing. And there was no intention of reducing staffing in those areas.
Our goal is still to increase staffing in the police department, but the funds are just not there this year to do that.
Dean?
Would you repeat again how far behind the police-fire pension is? And I'm sorry, remind me what the proposal is to bring that up to speed.
So, that's part of what we're going to talk about on June 5th is more sort of details about how we get to that answer. But right now, our funding level is more than a million, for both funds combined, is more than $1 million less than what the actuary recommends the funding be. So, that's the difference between the state minimum and what the actuary recommends. So, to, to fund them at a level that we think is appropriate and responsible will take more than $1 million. And that's not something that we will be able to do all at once.
Okay, so it'd be like a million to bring it back up to where it's supposed to be, plus another million for the 2018?
No, I mean, it would be $1 million a year, every year into the future.
Right, okay.
So, and, and how that gap will grow bigger the longer we take to address it.
I agree. One more question, and this is completely switching gears. And I might be oversimplifying this, but the disputed hospital tax money, I wasn't aware of that. Is that money that's literally kind of in limbo, that was just caught in the middle of when the case hit and everything? Is it kind of just money sitting in no man's land that we don't want to take it because we're not sure if we're going to have to give it back? Is it that simple?
That, that's, yeah, that's probably a good description. I mean, I'm sure Jim could put some fancy illegal words on it, but that's a good description. I mean, it's, it's, we have the money, but it's not our money to spend because it's disputed and potentially, we will have to pay it back.
Okay, thank you.
Aaron?
So, the, there was another conversation around, excuse me, another conversation around funding, not for social services, but substance abuse and things like that. I didn't hear how that would be addressed in this budget. Because we talked a lot about that around. It was sort of contingent upon the support that was given for the increase in police officers of $200,000. So, I didn't see that being addressed at all in the budget. Was there a plan to address that?
There isn't a plan at this time. I'm, I'm hoping we can have a discussion when we discuss social service funding with the township supervisor. Probably a more realistic source of funding at this time.
The $9,600 for EDC, why would we increase that amount to them at this point?
Well, several years ago, it was, it was cut in half. And the EDC has taken on an increasingly more significant role in small business development counseling. For example, when someone applies to the city for a new business or opening, they, one of the things they do is they get counseling from the SBDC. So, they've provided a lot of service regarding small business growth and counseling. And frankly, I think we could rely on the expertise at SBDC with, for some of our, when we're considering development agreements and considering development projects. And we really don't do that at this time. So, so it's a, it's an investment in, in, in economic development.
But that, that's an investment. We don't, the city administrator wouldn't be responsible for that at $190,000 a year?
It would supplement whatever we're doing at the city.
Okay, is there an amount, I guess, Elizabeth, you would answer this one. Is there an amount that we spend on any sort of city project or initiative that triggers an RFP? Or is that something that's just solely at the discretion of the mayor or the city administrator?
So, so we have a very vague purchasing policy at this time. And what it says, if a purchase is 10,000 or more, we have to bid it. Well, we know that's not realistic because not everything gets bid. Sometimes we issue an RFP, sometimes we do, you know, qualifications-based selection. There's different methods we use. But generally, there should be a competitive process for any purchase over $10,000. And just, just for your information, I have been working with a team on writing new purchasing policies for, I think, more than six months now, and I hope we're getting close. I think we're getting close.
So, I'm a little, maybe even some of the folks watching are a little confused. You said we have a policy that we just don't follow? Is that what I heard you say?
No, we, we do follow it. It's just that the language is sort of inappropriate to some of the situations that we deal with. So, technically, it would require us to bid every purchase over $10,000. I think what we recognize is that the intent is that there needs to be a competitive selection. There are some purchases that aren't appropriate to a formal bid process because the selection isn't made on price alone. Things like professional engineering services, things like other services like software. I wouldn't go out and buy the low-bid software for the city's financial systems. So, there's more that goes into the decision on many purchases than just price.
So, specifically, as we talk about, it appears as though we're going to be doing a search for the city administrator. That particular service, does that require a RFP?
It requires, it requires some type of competitive selection, whether that's an RFP or maybe more focused on just qualifications, but we could do an RFP for that certainly.
Well, how would one know to, to put in a bid?
So, normally, when we do a competitive selection, we advertise on our website. And for some purchases, we advertise in the paper or other professional publications. It sort of depends on what the purchase is because not every method of advertising is appropriate for every purchase.
I think that's all I have for now.
Dean?
One more question on the disputed hospital tax money. I don't know, is it just in a savings account or?
So, we, so each fund isn't actually a separate bank account. We have what we call consolidated cash accounts. So, we track how much of our balance belongs to each fund. So, it's not in a separate bank account, but it's in a separate fund so that we can specifically identify in the accounting system that is a separate pot of money.
Okay.
Does that help?
Yeah, what I'm getting at is any interest made on it? Do we have to give that over if we lose it? Do we have to give that over to Carl, do you think?
That's something that the court would have to decide. That won't be our decision.
Thank you.
Aaron?
Yeah, I have one other question as it relates to the city attorney fees. So, the first direct question, I think, is the, at the bullet point that says other outside legal services will be eliminated for an additional annual savings of $24,000. Trying to pose this question without putting a name out there, but are we talking about the attorney who represents us in the Carl lawsuit?
No.
Eric?
Will we still retain the outside person to do the union negotiations?
At this point, yes. Yeah. We've, we have $100,000 budgeted for negotiations. Is that correct?
Yeah, in next year's budget, about $100,000 to wrap up the negotiations that are already ongoing.
But the goal is to bring those in-house next time around.
Dennis?
I guess, following up, then, will we, do we have the depth of staff to handle the various kinds of legal challenges that some of these lawsuits bring to the community, to the city?
Yes.
Okay.
And if we don't, then we'll seek outside counsel, but for most things, yes.
I mean, we're still budgeting some money in the legal division for outside counsel. The difference will be that to access that, it will have to go through the city attorney so he can make a determination as to whether we have the expertise in-house or we need to go outside. That doesn't always happen now. Bill?
As far as the decline in retail sales tax, is that a statewide phenomenon? Or is it kind of localized to Urbana?
Yes, there have been months this year when sales taxes have been down statewide. Obviously, it impacts different localities in different ways. But I did do some digging into that nice data that we get from the state. And, you know, because my first thought was, well, wouldn't it be great if that was a mistake? I didn't find a mistake. And then my, my next, you know, thought was, well, I wonder if it's a particular business or a particular group of businesses, but it was just generally very widespread.
Okay. And then, as far as money we get from the state, I'm trying to remember which ones are based per capita. So, state motor fuel tax, state income tax, use tax, part of the sales tax, is that per capita?
Use tax is per capita as well.
Anything else?
I can't think of anything off the top of my head, but we've got a lot of different revenues, so.
And I'm recommending E911 funds also be per capita if anybody gets a chance to make that happen. As far as the food and beverage tax increase goes, does, when, when people sell alcohol at retail, is that included in that? Mike says yes. So, if you got a $4 beer, you probably aren't going to pay $4.02 for it. So, I mean, so this, that tax, at least for, for that portion or for anything where people are already calculating the, the sales tax, like I think our former representative from Ward 6 used to have like $8 lunches or something, and you wouldn't have to pay taxes on it. So, for those kinds of examples, it'll actually be absorbed by the business, I guess.
Yeah, I guess. I think that's less common than just applying the tax on top.
But for alcohol, at least, where you're paying a flat amount, that would definitely be absorbed by the business, I guess. And then, I guess, the VSIP, I still have questions about. They said the goal was staff reduction. So, and in some cases where the incentive might encourage somebody that's been here a long time making $90,000 a year to retire, and then we would hire someone to replace them at $60,000 a year. Is that another potential goal of this particular program? Or would the incentives not be directed to encourage that kind of?
So, we have some draft guidelines that we're still discussing. But generally speaking, we'd be looking for savings on an annual recurring basis that are at least 50% of the total cost for that position. So, that means, you know, it could mean in some cases, if several people are leaving, there's some sort of reorganization and things are shifted around. Some positions could be eliminated entirely, some could be done perhaps with halftime employees. But if there's not a significant savings, then it doesn't make sense for us to pay the incentive financially.
Okay. And if, I mean, in some departments, it seems like we have enough employees where there's natural turnover and we can have left positions vacant. You don't see that being enough to encourage the kind of savings we're looking for. Is maybe not necessarily leaving that particular, I mean, basically accomplishing the same thing when there's a vacancy that comes up, consider reorganizing then or doing something to, to save the same amount of money without paying people to leave.
I, I think there's two things. There may be some cases where we have vacancies that we choose not to fill. But in some cases, those might be critical positions that we, that we need to fill. So, you know, that's something that we need to consider carefully as we have open positions. Sure, we don't, we don't want to hire somebody then offer to pay them an incentive to go, so.
Okay, thanks.
Dennis?
Could you talk briefly about the stormwater utility fee or change? That was one of the, I can't remember all the things on the slide, but I think that was one of the, were the areas where the percent of fees collected was going to be increased this year?
Right, yes. And actually, there is a long-term stormwater plan that lays out all the expenses and all the improvements that need to be done. And so, part of that plan was that there would be regular annual increases. And I think Bill will correct me if I'm wrong, that we're getting towards the end of that plan and they're going to have to create a new plan soon? Or no, we're still, okay.
So, it's for future extension of the stormwater, stormwater services?
Well, the stormwater utility fee pays for general stormwater maintenance as well as it would pay for improvements. But I think future extension, we probably try to have that paid ultimately by, by people who developed the land that necessitated the extension.
But it's going to be on everybody's bi-monthly bill or whatever that bill is?
Thanks. Yeah, the stormwater utility fee is really to pay, for the most part, our operating and maintenance costs related to the various stormwater programs, equipment, maintenance, salaries, et cetera. There's a very little to no capital component to that stormwater utility fee. And yes, it does go up a couple percent every year because our expenses go up that much every year. The plan that maybe Elizabeth was alluding to is, we do have a few years out, and I'll talk about this next Monday night. We would like to do a stormwater master plan. We've been wanting to do that for some time. The last one we did a plan was 1980. So, it's, really needs to be updated, our plan. It was a good plan in 80, but it needs to be updated.
I see.
But as far as a spending plan, it's pretty much CPI and, you know, related type increases.
So, it's not as if the program was running at a deficit currently?
No, no, it's not. No, we stay within our revenues.
Bill?
While Bill's there, I have a question. On the stormwater fee, when there's new development, I know we haven't had a whole lot that would increase impervious surface, but like the campus circle or St. Patrick's Church, when they built their parking lots, does that immediately get into the system?
Immediately, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, any building permit is linked to engineering, and we do those calculations. And then the sanitary district does the billing for us, but we provide that information.
Okay, thanks.
Jared?
So, I could probably just talk to you about this one-on-one, Elizabeth, but I feel like your answer might be useful to the public and everybody who, who might be watching. I suppose you guys had to have done an assessment of some sort of why VSIP is a better idea than any other idea that you could come across to shave savings off of personnel costs. But I was just curious as to why you guys landed on that one, if you could speak to it just a little bit?
You know, we looked at VSIP and we thought about the early retirement incentive program through IMRF. And the significant difference between those two options is that with the ERI, we don't get to choose who goes. If we offer it, everybody who qualifies can take that offer. And so, we don't, we don't get to control in terms of that we only give the incentive to people whose positions maybe we won't fill or where we can reorganize and generate some savings. There's no way to predict or control it. Whereas with VSIP, it's voluntary on the part of the employees, but it's also voluntary from the city side. So, we can make sure that we can create savings when we pay the incentive.
It's a more strategic way to, to approach.
I got you. I mean, I, I was just doing some quick math on personnel costs. And like, for example, if everybody across the board took a 5% cut in pay, we would make up our, our projected deficit in spending almost exactly. So, it's just something I had thought of. And, you know, I, I know that city jobs are generally considered good, if not great, jobs and notwithstanding just because of pay. And I know personally, as a young adult, in these times, I've had a hard time finding and getting a good job myself. And I would probably rather keep a good job with less money than lose, than leave that job. And I don't know, I just have concerns about staff, you know? And I know you guys are all overworked as it is. And we throw, you know, other, other people out the door and send other people on their way. It's just more work for everyone else who's, who's left hanging, hanging around. So, I'm just playing around in my head with an idea of, you know, how to keep your staff, but still cut your costs and offering other alternatives, that's all.
Yeah, well, I will say ultimately, if we're reducing staff, I think we are at the point where we can't just keep squeezing and squeezing and squeezing. So, at some point, So at some point, staffing reductions means reductions in service levels. So, I mean, we have to be realistic. We can't, we can't get smaller and smaller and do everything that we're doing right now.
Sure. And it's just one of those, one of those things where, you know, if I was asked, I feel like I would sacrifice. I would, I would rather say, sure, I'd, I'd rather take away some of my, some of my salary and keep my job than lose it altogether and have to go find work elsewhere.
Eric?
Well, but I guess the, the point is that VSIP is voluntary both ways. But I'm, I'm going to be a nerd, as I always am, and ask, are there, are there actual studies in the sociology or the management literature about the relative merits of different ways of reducing staffing, whether through VSIP or, or through, I guess, or through furlough days or through, you know, trying to get voluntary salary cuts such as Jared has talked about? Are, are, you know, have those, I don't, I wonder, I just wonder how, how, if there's a literature on that, those studies?
If there is, I have not seen it. You know, some of those suggestions like furlough days were actually on our preliminary list of things we might look at. And we may get there eventually, but that wasn't something we chose as our first option.
Other questions? Jared?
Just one more quick follow-up. What's our contingency should the VSIP not result in voluntary needs that we need to make it?
Then we look at other options. The, the, the reality is, we have to face reality. And we haven't been for several years in our budgets. And, and this is an attempt and a plan, really, to get us positioned, to, to a position of financial strength. And it's going to take a while, but it, but it's going to happen. So, so we've been putting off making these decisions for several years and we really can't put it off anymore.
Erin?
How much do we actually get from the state?
Oh, you mean if, if you add everything together in all the funds or the general fund or?
Let's just go with the general fund. I'm sorry, my mic wasn't on. How much do we get from the state?
I'd have to add up several line items, but I'm going to say it's more than $5 million in the general fund. I mean, our income tax is about $4 million, plus there's some other odds and ends.
State motor fuel tax, food and beverage tax?
Yeah, I mean, there's millions in capital improvement funds too, so.
So when you showed the graph earlier, light blue, purple, green, did that include state funding for, for this year and for FY '18?
Are you talking about this chart with the fund balance? So, so this is, this is looking at fund balance. And yes, this assumes we get all the revenues that are detailed in the budget document. So we're not assuming at this point that any of those are being reduced or going away. But we know that could happen, which is why we're, why the mayors emphasize the importance of having a healthy fund balance.
Okay, thank you.
Eric, will you take the chair for me?
Oh, sure. And I'd like to call on Mary Alice.
Thank you.
So I have two procedural questions. The first one with the VSIP. So I understand that it's voluntary both on the city side and on the employee side. But I'm wondering, who on the city actually approves it at the end of the day? Does it go through, I'm sure it has to go through layers, but does it come to city council? Does it go to the mayor? Does it go to the HR manager? Who does it?
Approving the program or approving the applications?
The applications.
I, I suspect the city council may have to approve the program, but that would then probably give authority to approve individual applications to the mayor.
Working in close concert with the departments.
Okay, obviously, we'd have HR and finance and department heads involved in the conversation.
But it would be, ultimately, it would be the mayor who would make the final decision in terms of who to accept and who not to accept for the VSIP program. Is that correct?
But, but based, but based on, I mean, we have some criteria in the, in the current draft of the plan in terms of how much savings it has to generate, so.
Okay, I think, you know, one of the-
It wouldn't be arbitrary, it would be going by the criteria of the plan.
One of my concerns has been always, I, I know that there is significant savings when people who are at the upper tier decide to leave. One of the challenges for long-term employees, of course, is they take with them just such a wealth of institutional knowledge with them. So I think, I think I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but I think we have to be very careful that we don't put the city in a bad position, basically. And I know you guys understand that, but I just want to say that.
I don't intend to put the city in a bad position.
My second question has to do with the city administrator. So I'm, I'm trying to wrap my hand around two things. The first one is, is that we're, we're going to have some significant departures from our staffing, right? So we have the, I'm sorry, I need my glasses, chief of staff. And also Libby Tyler is going to be leaving us. So those are two high-level positions. How do you envision this position interacting with these two other positions leaving? So the city administrator, are the, is the city administrator going to take over some of the chief of staff's roles and Libby Tyler's roles? How, how is that whole bollywood going to work?
City administrator will take over a lot of the day-to-day operations of the city. So it, it means with attending staff meetings. It means department heads reporting to the city administrator, for example. It means working with Elizabeth on budgeting. It means addressing some of the long-term planning functions that haven't been done, strategic planning. Elizabeth just mentioned updating, but we have procure, we have a lot of policies that need to be updated and clarified, which will really actually make employees' lives easier. So procurement, for example, is a big one that needs to be addressed. I've been here for two weeks, so I'm just learning about some of these outdated policies. Elizabeth can probably, and other department heads can probably tell you more. But there's, it's the internal city infrastructure that really hasn't been addressed in the last few years. And that's what needs to be put into place. So, so the, um, so that, that's, you know, some of the things they'll be doing.
So in terms of the chief of staff, if we don't replace the chief of staff, does that mean all those duties get sucked into the chief, the administrator position?
Yes.
Okay. So it's really redefining the chief of staff's position?
Yes.
Okay. So the job description is on the books at the moment, is there?
There's a, there's a very general description in our city code. Basically, it says that this person would have, and it's, and that's a fairly old description. This person would have the experience, education, and ability or professional background of a city manager. One of the procedures, and we're still early in the process as far as the search for the city administrator, but one of the pieces of this search, one of the first pieces of the search is to develop a job description. And that'll be part of the job search process.
So does that mean that the job description comes to city council or is that something that's approved?
Yeah, the city council will be involved in this.
Okay, all right. So because you said that you started the search, it means-
No, 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 we haven't started the search.
Okay. So you're starting the paperwork to start the search, is that correct?
Yeah, we're still, we're still in the very early stages. The last two weeks have been budget. And a number of other things. But, but once we start the process for hiring the city administrator, there, it will be a very, you, the city council would be involved, the public will be involved, staff will be involved. There's a, there's a defined process for doing it, so.
Okay.
We haven't started it yet.
And then my last question is, because I'm sure there's other people wondering, I'm certainly wondering, $190,000, that's a lot.
That includes salary, overhead, any memberships in professional organizations, travel to conferences. City administrator is, well, can we talk salary? Typical $140,000?
That, so that would be the highest paid person in the city, is that correct?
No.
It would not, I don't-
No, it would not.
I'll have to look in the book and see who else is. Okay.
And I will say that even cities with, we have the mayor council form of government. Most cities in the country have a city manager form of government. The National League of Cities is reporting, however, that even cities with the mayor council form of government, the, the trend is very strongly toward having city administrators, basically because cities are very complex operations with, you know, we have 250 employees and multimillion-dollar budgets. So, so it's not unusual for cities like ours to be moving back to the administrator position. In fact, it's unusual if we didn't. It really would be unusual if we didn't.
All right, I will give, can I have the chair back?
Here, have a chair.
Thank you. Yes, Dennis.
I guess like the interesting corollary to that discussion, and I guess we'll learn a lot more about this in the future, is then, how do you see that redefining the mayor's job?
Right now, I feel like I'm doing 10 jobs. It's, it's going to be worked out, you know, we'll work it out.
Erin?
So I know we had a, a vote to do an increase not too long ago. But with the city manager, going back to a city manager or a city administrator form of government, would that reduce the role of the mayor?
Frankly, I think it would enhance the role of the mayor. It would give the, the role of the mayor, and not just me, but any mayor, the opportunity to think about bigger picture things, to think about policy, to actually be out in the community more, to, I want to build relationships in the community. I want to work on building the narrative about Urbana. I want to personally work on building relationships with investors and developers and, and the people in the community. So I think it will enhance the ability of the mayor to do their job.
I think the, when I looked back at the city administrator and mayor position then, the mayor made a lot less. So I think Jared was talking about 5% cuts. I guess the mayor could take a 20% cut or something, make up for about 4%.
Well, I voted against the pay increase for the mayor. And if you look at the list of salaries in the back of the budget book, the mayor's salary is in the lower 50th, the lower half of the, well, it's not even in the upper 50th percentile in the budget, so. So the mayor's salary is relatively low compared to other administrators in the city, which is fine. This is a public service job.
So first, when Erin mentioned the city administrator form of government, I wouldn't think it's, it's not a different form of government, it's just a different form of administration.
We're not changing our form of government.
We aren't changing the champagne, we're just changing our administrative structure. Our mayor will still have veto power, still be able to vote on certain things that the council doesn't vote on. And just all the power and responsibilities will still be the same. So thanks for this responsible budget. I think it's important, even though we've concentrated a lot on the VSIP program because it affects people, I think some of the bigger number things are in other parts of the budget and we'll be discussing this for a while. But I think it's also important to remember the investment portion. And I think part of that investment portion is the city administrator and the EDC. I think I figured the extra $70,000 or $80,000 for the city administrator would be made up by $20 million of investment, not annual investment, just $20 million. So if he makes it up, or he or she makes it up in three or four years, and we have $20 million worth of construction that would pay for it. And I think that's, that's very reasonable and doable. That's even if it's not retail and we don't get any taxes from it, other than property taxes. The other part of investments, I think, that we might look toward the capital improvement program and is if there are investments we can make that would save us money in the long term on the capital projects, like road projects that, where roads would deteriorate faster than, well, you know what I mean? That would be, they're under deterioration now and we can save money by borrowing money and then doing them sooner. So I'd be interested in seeing if that's another investment we could make.
Well, that's one of the things we mentioned. We have been deferring maintenance and deferring investment in infrastructure, which we, we need to start paying attention to our basic infrastructure. And, and I would close, well, I guess we'll close. I'll close by saying our most important infrastructure in this city, in this community are the people, both residents of Urbana, the businesses of Urbana, and the employees of this, of this city. And this is done with an eye toward strengthening and positioning this city for the future. And I have tremendous respect for the employees. And I've grown to, really, my appreciation for them has grown in the last two weeks since I've been inside the city building. And I expect to work very closely as we develop both the VSIP program, we go through the search for the administrator. You know, people will be involved at every step of the way. We're just, we're still early in the process. It's been two weeks, so we have a lot more to do. But you will be kept apprised every step of the way.
All right. No more questions? All right, thank you very much. Okay, I'll take the chair back. And we have reports of standing committees, committee of the whole. Mary Alice?
The committee of the whole recommended approval for resolution number 2017-05029R, a resolution authorizing acceptance of grants for Market at the Square with the First Federal Savings Bank CD. On behalf of the committee, I so move.
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Erin. Do we need a roll call on this?
We've been typically taking roll calls on, on any resolution that involves money.
Okay.
Ammons?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
Do I have one on this?
No.
Okay. All right, the committee also recommended for approval, resolution number 2017-
It would be appropriate for the mayor to indicate the outcome of the vote.
That item passes.
Mary Alice?
There we go. Okay. The committee of the whole recommended for approval, resolution number 2017-05030R, resolution authorizing acceptance of grants for SNAP double value program with Farm Credit Illinois at the Farmers Market CD. On behalf of the committee, I so move.
I'll second.
Seconded by Dennis. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ammons?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
Okay, Mary Alice? That motion passes. We're still settling into our rolls here.
I have for resolution number 2017-05031R, a resolution authorizing acceptance of grants for SNAP double value program with Link Up Illinois at the Farmers Market. The committee of the whole recommends approval. I move so for the committee.
Second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Erin. Will the clerk, clerk, please call the roll?
Ammons?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes. Mary Alice?
All right. Resolution number 2017-05032R, a resolution to approve an intergovernmental cooperative agreement between the city of Urbana and the Illinois Department of Revenue. And the committee of the whole recommends approval. On behalf of the committee, I so move.
Second.
Motion by Wu, seconded by Ammons. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ammons?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes. Mary Alice?
Resolution number 2017-05033R, a resolution asserting prevailing wages, 2017 to 2018. The committee of the whole recommends approval. On behalf of the committee, I so move.
Second.
Motion by Wu, seconded by Ammons. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ammons?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
That motion passes. Mary Alice?
Resolution number 2017-05-034R, a resolution authorizing acceptance of an Illinois Arts Council Agency grant for the youth employment in the arts project, the public arts program. The committee of the whole recommended approval. On behalf of the committee, I so, I so move.
A second.
Motion by Woo, seconded by Brown. I was reminded that we could ask for discussion. Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ammons?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
That motion passes. Mary Alice?
All right. Resolution number 2017-05-035R, resolution approving an agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation, the Lincoln Avenue improvement and, from South Killarney Street to Northwest Sailing Court.
Good job.
The committee of the whole recommends approval. On behalf of the committee, I so move.
Second. Go forward, Eric.
Motion by Woo, seconded by Jacobson, any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ammons?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yep.
And Woo.
Yes.
That motion passes. It brings us to reports of special committees. Reports of officers. Bill Gregg?
I want to let you know that the mayor, among other things, has been busy signing license agreements, and I thought I would just update you per our recent right-of-way ordinance modifications to those locations and who they're with. And so, here is a license agreement with McLeod, and they're going to be serving UC Bank. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. So, they're going to be starting over by Vine Street in Oregon and meandering on California up Cedar to serve UC Bank. So, this is one license agreement. It's all underground work that was recently signed and approved. Notification, et cetera, will be done by the contractor. The next one is Campus Communications Group, and they're providing connection from South Vine in Florida going north to Fair Lawn Drive and servicing the Fair Lawn condo apartment area between Anderson and Vine Street with fiber. And the last one that was recently signed is with McLeod. And again, they too, starting downtown by Water and Broadway Street, will be going south on Broadway to Elm, Elm to Cedar, and again to UC Bank, again, UC Bank. What I understand, there'll be many employees moving, relocating to downtown, including the UC Wealth Management Group and I think some other groups. So, they're getting, if you will, dual access or redundancy to UC Bank. So, those are three fiber companies, Campus Communications, Metro, and McLeod that are going to be doing work in our town here. And again, the work will be all underground. And that's all I have. I think I mentioned it last week, but I'll do it again. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The campus corridor study will be this Thursday?
It's in your package. It's Tuesday, May 16th, from 5:30 to 7:00 at the Church of Christ.
At the Church of Christ, yeah.
So, while the file is read.
So, if you have an interest in what is the suggested improvements that will be occurring along this corridor between now and 2030, 2040, and beyond, please attend. Again, there was a lot of public input in previous meetings. There was, I think, nine alternatives or options that the public had come up with, and then RPC, Regional Planning Commission staff, distilled down a suggested improvements along Curtis Road. This is mostly between US 45 and Illinois 130. So, thank you for that tomorrow night.
Bill.
And related to that, I heard from Ashley, and she wants to answer a question I had last week. She gave me a tentative agenda for, so there is going to be a presentation from, the Welcome and Food will be 5:30, 5:45, then a presentation around 5:45 to 6:15, and then questions and information boards after that.
Okay, thank you. Public input. Okay.
Okay. Under new business, resolution number 2017-05-036R, resolution waiving a resolution respecting passage of resolutions, comma, resolution number 9394-r30, waiver of resolution number 9394-r30 in order to reaffirm resolution number 2017-04-028R. Would the legal division please explain?
Thank you.
Yes. In fact, I will try to explain this, and I'm not sure I can avoid the word "resolution." But, at the last city council meeting, a item was presented, a resolution was presented, which did not go through the committee of the whole. The reference to resolution 9394-r30 is, are the council's resolution which requires, you know, ordinances and resolutions to first go through the committee of the whole where most of your discussion is held. And then, if, if you all choose, you can advance each one or none of those items onto the city council with or without a recommendation for approval. Obviously, if they do not receive approval by the committee of the whole for advancement, they are not advanced onto the city council for consideration. In any event, there was some thought that the process that was, by the way, the resolution had to be expedited the last time around because there was not time to walk it through the normal process. And I forget what the agency was, but they required a signature right away, and so you all approved it. The problem is, is the commission that was involved with this resolution is not one of the ones that is more or less through ordinances accepted from having to go through the committee of the whole and then the council. So, this should have been presented, or as, I believe we have a memo from City Clerk Smythe indicating that you can waive by proper vote the resolution on resolutions. And so, that is essentially what we are proposing for you to do retroactively. And then, the next item, number two, which ends in 03, 037R, would be a ratification of the action you took. This is basically cleanup.
Dennis?
Shall I take the motion?
You may.
All right. So, I, I move that we approve resolution number 2017-05-036R, which is a rather complex move to clean up previous mistakes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Roberts, seconded by Woo. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Oh, do we need a roll call?
It's not much. It's a resolution.
I don't think so.
No, okay. That motion carries. Resolution number 2017-05-037R, resolution ratifying city council action respecting resolution number 2017-04-028R.
I move approval.
Motion by Miller, seconded by Jacobson. Any further discussion? All those in-
I would like, I would suggest a roll call on this, since we took a roll call on the previous one.
Okay.
On, on that, on this motion on the 1st of May.
Agreed.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ammons?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
That motion passes. Mayoral appointments to boards and commissions. I'm pleased to recommend appointment of Valerie Caress to the Market at the Square Advisory Board. She'll take, there's a vacancy, current vacancy there for a community member, and she'll take that position. She's been a resident of the city of Urbana for nine years. She's a WIC nutritionist at the Champagne-Urbana Public Health District. She's been very active in the community garden at the Public Health District, and she facilitates the WIC Farmers Market Nutrition Program. And she's actually worked very closely with Natalie Kenny Marquez in the nutrition programs at the Farmers Market already. Traffic Commission, Dean Hazen, city council member, he'll take Mike Madigan's place, who, when he left the council, that created a vacancy on the traffic commission. Dennis Roberts will be joining the Regional Planning Commission. He takes Charlie Smythe's place on the Plan Commission. And Mary Alice Woo will take the position that I'm vacating on the Market at the Square Advisory Board. So, is there a motion for approval?
I move approval. Second.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Bill. Any further discussion, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, that passes. And next, we have election of mayor pro tem.
So, I believe it's been traditional for the most senior member of the city council to adopt this, and I believe that's Mr. Roberts. So, I would like to nominate Dennis to serve as mayor pro tem.
I'll second. I'd also ask if the attorney could just kind of give a brief explanation of what the legal authority and purpose and responsibilities are for mayor pro tem for the benefit of the public.
Essentially, the mayor pro tem is like a vice president. He or she has the authority of the mayor when the mayor is absent and unable to act for whatever reason, vacation, travel. We'll limit it to that, but yes.
And I think there's ribbon-cutting involved.
Lots of ribbon-cuttings.
Maybe I should have said when the mayor is unavailable to do certain ceremonial functions as well.
I kind of like the way you started out, Ashley.
Eric?
Now, the other tradition, of course, is that the mayor pro tem never takes any action of consequence when the mayor is away.
Dean?
Does that mean I get out of that gig on the 24th?
No, you're still on for that. There's, there's another one later that day.
Oh, okay. Nice try.
Once you agree to a ribbon-cutting, you're, you're committed. Okay, so we have a motion by Eric, seconded by Bill. Any further discussion? Do you need a roll call, or all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, congratulations.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll have the scissors for you next.
Darn.
With no further business before the council, this meeting is adjourned.